It's crazy.
I'm waking up crazy too. I get up before daylight.
I try to make it two.
Make sure.
All right, at 6:00 PM, I will call the November 8th, 2022 meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order, and I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance. My heart's beating right now like it did for my very first meeting, and the reason being is this is my last. So it's bittersweet for me. Been looking for this meeting for 11 years now, and if you don't think this is a difficult job, look at me now versus my picture up there 11 years ago. But again, welcome all of y'all in attendance. I'm gonna have an extended announcement, so y'all have to bear with me on that, but I hope after 11 years I've earned that privilege. But any other announcements before I get started?
Mr. Chairman, the county manager and myself will be leaving for Raleigh on the 16th, I guess that's Thursday, for the legislative vote. We've made it to the top of the list, so we're gonna be presenting there about legislative vote that we had about, you know, about the safety tank problem that we have. So we'll be leaving on the 16th, win, lose, draw, or even. So we'll give a report on that, or somebody will, you know, after the, after the, but so far, so good. It's been received well. We've got 40, I think it's 49 counties signed on to it. So, so it's, it gets moved up environmental, the environmental people will be there, so we'll see how it goes.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Bill.
Mr. Chairman, we'll have our Veterans Day program this Friday, and Thursday, we're gonna make a decision whether to have it in the Franklin High School Fine Arts Center, which we have that reserved because of the weather that's coming in. And we're gonna be honoring a 98-year-old, war two veteran, and we're gonna bring him inside. But we'll be having a meeting on that. We hope everybody can come. We'll probably move it to the Fine Arts Center by what the weather looks like. Franklin High School.
11 o'clock.
It starts at 11, yes. So we wouldn't have a parade, things like that, if we go to Franklin High School Fine Arts Center. But they can come at 10:30 and have a seat, and we'll start the program at 11.
Good. Any further announcements? Well, like I mentioned a few minutes ago, this is my last meeting unless there's a dire emergency that happens to arise between now and the end of the month, but it is my last official meeting as a commissioner. It's probably been the greatest honor of my life to sit in this chair, and especially for these four gentlemen sitting on each side of me to trust me, being in the chairmanship for the last long time. I don't know for a fact, but I would say I'm potentially the longest-serving chairman in Macon County history, and it's just something I've kept on my shoulders, and I've done my best to be fair to all. So again, this is gonna be a little bit extended, but y'all just bear with me, and I'll roll through this as quick as I can, and I hope y'all appreciate it. I hope you'll listen in to what I have to say, and I hope that all of you will get some type of insight of my mindset and my respect for these people up here that I serve with. So I'm gonna start over here with our county attorney, Mr. Eric Ridenhour. We started out when I first became a commissioner with Chester Jones. Chester retired, and the group of men that are here now, we went through a long, arduous process of interviewing, meeting various attorneys, and this man stepped up to the plate and has done an admirably fantastic job. And he doesn't know this, but I would get a random text from this man every now and then, and it's not about work, it's not about county, it's about life, and he just makes me laugh. He makes me gut laugh sometimes. So Eric, I appreciate that, and even though I'm not gonna be in this chair, I hope you don't forget to keep me in the loop on some of your, on some of your text messages, they're great. So thank you. Lori, she's been in this chair as our finance director since I've been a commissioner. How long have you been here, Lori?
11 years.
11 years, so just as long as I have. So I think, I guess she started right before I did. Greatest thing about this, about this lady and the department that she oversees is that I've never had to worry about anything. This board's never had to worry about anything. She handles all the micro elements, all the numbers, the ins and the outs. This is not a little organization here. I mean, we've got a $60 million budget, about 400, roughly 400 to 500 employees. She's got a whole bunch of various mindsets up here to keep with, but she keeps her nose to the grindstone. She's very quiet, and she does a fantastic job, and I mentioned that earlier. What's great about it is that hers, again, we don't have to worry about the micro and ask many questions. You don't ever have to question, you know, what's right from the get-go, and it allows this group up here to focus on the macro management of the county. This lady will never have a problem getting a reference from me or a recommendation. She is as fine as they come. Lori, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Higdon. Paul has been serving, I guess, beside me for 10 years now. 10 years now we've sat up here together. Paul and I don't always agree, you see, out of all and everything, but there's one thing we agree on, and that's to be gentlemen and to be men, and we leave our differences here in this room. We have the utmost respect for each other, and I look forward to seeing him. We cross paths on job sites a lot, so I look forward to seeing him there and kinda laugh about old times. Everybody up here has a love for Macon County, and this man does, and I appreciate his willingness to serve, appreciate his family, and I appreciate what he stands for. So Paul, thank you, it's been my honor to serve with you.
Likewise.
Sure has. Commissioner Young, he's in year two with me, he's the rookie up here on the board. But I mentioned respect with Paul. Josh has, let me put it this way, since he's become a member, out of everybody up here... Everybody up here, he probably won't be telling us, don't tell anyway, I've spent more time discussing Macon County and a lot about life with Josh. He has a strong desire to learn, he has a strong desire to do well, and he loves Macon County. Again, just like I mentioned Paul's family, Josh's family, oh gosh, every time, I was working with his brother yesterday. Fine, fine, fine people. Macon County is blessed to have the Young family here and in Franklin, and they're blessed to have Josh as part of this board.
Amen.
Commissioner Bill, at another event, I spoke about him the other night, but somebody said that I have a big heart. This man's heart's bigger, and his body proves it. This man has more love for Macon County, and I'm not gonna try to, hopefully I don't hurt anybody's feelings here, but he works harder at this position than any of us up here. That'll be a full-time job for him. He wants to do his best for Macon County, doing things like bringing the dialysis center to Franklin, to fight mental health, Ronnie Bill. His heart's massive, and that heart drives him for his love for Macon County working. Again, I mentioned differences in politics sometimes up here, but there's not a person up here, even on this board, that knows they couldn't reach out to this man for any problem whatsoever. Those differences would be buried, and Ronnie would be there to help him. Ronnie knows that, and everybody else here knows that. He's a fine man, and I didn't know him very well before I came a commissioner, but he's in, I think he just wrapped up 16 years. Ronnie's done a well of a job for Macon County. May continue, we'll find out as this election goes. We'll see. But even he's just talking about whether win, lose, or draw, he's still going to battle in Raleigh here coming up with us with North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Ronnie, it's been my honor to serve with you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gary Shields. When I think of Gary, I think of the, probably the most, I think of gentleman, most respected gentleman that I know. In fact, I Googled gentleman today, and there's a picture of him right there. This guy is an icon of a man. His seller, his service for our country, his service for our county, his service for our school is literally unparalleled, and because of that, man, I've learned a lot from him, and I'm gonna miss serving with him. Gary is a, again, when I think of gentleman, he's the one that I think of first. He holds himself as a true man, and I respect that, and trying to emulate a lot of his characteristics all the time.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Commissioner Derek Rowland, our county manager. I started out with our current mayor Franklin, Jack Courtney, is our county manager. Jack helped lead me through my first baby steps as a commissioner, and then we went through, of all the things I've done as a commissioner, all the things we've done, we've done a lot of great recreation projects, we've done a lot of great things for the employees, we've tackled a lot of projects, but if you had me pinpoint, pinpoint what I feel like's the most important thing that I've done as a commissioner, and that's just being one-fifth, 20% of choosing this man to be our county manager. He has done a phenomenal job, he's done a fantastic job, and I don't know who the next chairman of this board's gonna be, I don't know. That next chairman is getting ready to see how hard this guy works and what he actually does. I saw it as a commissioner, I didn't really strongly appreciate it until I became chairman, of what he does to make sure Macon County's held in the highest regards. He's got a whole lot of personalities. Mine's different from Gary's, Ronnie's, Josh's, Paul's, everybody's different. He's got a whole lot of bosses up here that he has to try and keep happy, try and keep Macon County moving forward, and then we've got a whole lot of team members, employees, that he has to work with. So Derek, we took a lot of flack when we hired you because of your age, but holy comoly, have you done a great job. You've outperformed all of us, and because of that, I've never, not a single time, hesitated or regretted hiring you, and like I said, Lori, I will gladly, I hope you never need, I hope you're in Macon County until you retire and you're 120, but if not, you've got a fan of me for life. You've earned my utmost respect, so thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
Mike's not here. Mike Decker, he's the woman keeping up this, but no, this lady, she's a, I was thinking, I make in this position about, Derek, tell me, 12,000 a year as chairman of the board, roughly. That's about a penny for every time I have to sign something. And that organization, that organizational skills from all the minutes, yeah, yeah, don't get, great working team, I appreciate it. I see some of our departments up here. Warren, okay, started out working under you and EMS. I gotta stop her, I'll start crying. Zep, Recreation, thank you. Thank y'all here, have you? Gosh, I'm gonna miss seeing all y'all. Brent, the sheriff, Sheriff Follin? Bobby, Brett needs a spoon. Appreciate what y'all do for the county, too, it's been my honor to sit here. So, yeah, just a little bit more, we'll get going, thank y'all. Again, after 11 years, I hope I've earned enough. I know all of our potential new commissioners are out manning the poles, beating the bush, biting the fingernails, losing hair like me always, but I wrote what I call the top 10 advice for the potentially new commissioners, new commissioners that might be coming on here. So I've got Tate's top 10 advice for them, so I'm gonna read through these top 10, and I'll pass it along to them when the time's right, but I wish they were here to hear it. Number one, civil discourse. Make sure this board has open and respectful conversations. Make sure you don't leave any bad feelings or differences in this room and don't take it out. Stand as one together as a board. Again, civil discourse. Sleep on any big decision. Don't make a rash decision. This county deserves better than that. Go home, sleep on it, think about it. Something that I've always done, I'm looking at this logo up here behind me, but whenever I have a rough one, something, and we've had a lot of them in the past 11 years that I really struggle with, I remember this bracelet I used to wear in high school that said WWJD, what would Jesus do? And I try and put myself in the people's shoes that our decisions are affecting, I try and put myself in their shoes, and I kinda think about how the Lord or Jesus might lead us in that. So WWJD, take your sleep, sleep on it, don't make a rash decision. Might surprise a lot of people in this room, but I put, keep in our county with low taxes. This board, the boards I've served on in the past, have proven that it's very feasible to be fiscally responsible and still have a very low tax rate. I think we're number four, Derek? Fourth lowest in the state right now, number three. Continue to keep our county financially strong, continue to keep a healthy fund balance, continue to abide by basic conservative financial principles, which in turn will reward us all greatly with an outstanding credit rating and respect. Respect from your constituents for being good financial overseers, as well as the rest of the state. Education. Continue to provide our kids the facilities and the tools for them to be successful. I think that's pretty basic. County services. Ensure that our county provides services in a friendly manner and that this board provides enough staff to be efficient in those services being delivered. Friendly and proficient. Derek and I have talked about that a lot. Number six, keep our county safe by supporting our sheriff's department and emergency responders. They're important. We can't have a good county, can't be a quality place to live if it's not safe. I think, I was talking with sheriff about it over the weekend, that I don't think in my time on this board, I've ever, I've never not voted for anything that the sheriff's department's asked for whatsoever, and Brent, I hope that it continues under your leadership. Our constituents deserve it. Government. I especially appreciate it in this seat. Keep an open mind. Keep an open door, and always respond to everybody. I as chairman, four or five emails a day, just to try and get back to people, whether I agree with them or disagree. I feel like if they're resident of this county, they deserve our respect. So again, keep an open mind, keep an open door, hear everybody's opinion, whether you agree with them or not. Just listen to them, give them the courtesy, and then move on with your decision. Our heritage and natural environment. Do all that you can to protect our county heritage, what our ancestors built here, and our natural environment, so that our future generations can enjoy it, our kids and our grandkids, great-grandkids can enjoy this county just like we have. We're blessed to live here, and it's really beautiful. Number nine, this one tickled me when I read it this morning. Drama. My goal as chairman, Derek knows this, a lot of y'all don't, because I don't talk about it, but it's my last meeting, so I can talk about it now, but part of my goal as chairman has been to keep the county out of the spotlight. I don't like the county in the spotlight. I feel like the county is here to provide basic services to our constituents and our county residents, and I've tried to not let our local government become too confrontational or try to provide too many distractions. Let's provide the services. I just never felt like this county needed to get into too many national issues, distractions, it just, I felt like it was divisive in our community, and I don't feel like that's necessarily what this local board's for. Our state, federal government, yeah, but not necessarily here. So again, just try and keep the drama down and just focus on, again, that's my personal opinion, just focus on the basic stuff that this county needs to provide. Number 10, and perhaps this is most important, is I hope this board moving forward will take care of our county staff and our county manager. Derek, he probably gonna slap me after this, but it's been several years since I believe he's had a race, and Derek, you're, you're worth it. You bust your ear in for this county, I'm proud of you. But I hope the new board moving forward will take care of our county staff, our county manager to the best of their ability, because that's, that's what it is. We might be the gem capital, but the true jewels of this county are our county employees and the people that work here. And I'm forever blessed to be a leader for them and to work alongside them. Again, they've earned my utmost respect. Trying to decide whether to release this information or not, but I don't care anymore. What are they gonna do, not reelect me? But the polls are coming up here in a little while, and I've got a little inside information. You see, I know who, I know who's ahead, and I'm gonna release a little inside info here. You all ready? This is important to me. You see, I'm getting ready to retire, so these polls are important for me. But tonight at 7:30, the college football polls are gonna be released, and the University of Georgia, my alma mater. So my point in telling y'all that is, is moving forward, after this meeting, if y'all wanna come talk polls to me, come talk football, because I don't care about the elections anymore. So that being said, it's been my honor and privilege to be a commissioner and to be the chairman of this board, and thank y'all.
Forgot to thank one person.
What'd I forget?
Your wife, man.
Here? No, she got it, she's got another one coming.
Oh.
Thank her the other night. Yes, my wife is here in the audience, I didn't forget her. She's here. All right, let's all rise, let's observe a moment of silence, and I'll ask county manager Derek Rowland the latest in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, we have one person signed up. Brittany, welcome.
Hi.
Spit it out, girl, spit it out.
A couple years ago, when I was trying to come up with a name for the Southern Scoop, when I was getting ready to launch it, one of the things that, that just really stuck with me was how Chairman Tate would always call me Spoon, which he did a minute ago. Okay, so I would always stir the pot, and Lord knows that's the truth, and so that's, I've never really told anybody that except for him, of course, but that's, why the Southern Scoop has the name that it has, but I wanted to thank you for your leadership and your, your ability to always address anything with the utmost respect and kindness, regardless of whether you agree with the other side of the opinion or not. And we know we don't always agree, and we've gone head to head so many times in the past 11 years, because I actually predate you working in the media in Macon County before you came on this board. And it makes, it makes my job reporting things that happen in our county tremendously easier when we have leaders who you know are doing everything with the best of intentions, and Macon County is so fortunate that the board, that they have a board that all of you are that way, and at the end of the day, you know that you're all doing what is, what is best for Macon County, and I don't know that there's possibly another person that exemplifies that more than, than you have as chairman, and I just wanted to thank you for that and wish you well.
Thank you, Spoon. Wow, yeah, thank you, wow. I'm kinda a loss for words right now, but thank you. Is there anyone else under public comment? All right, we'll move on. I know we gotta get out, get this done, so we can get out and see about those polls on Josh. All right, any additions to the agenda?
Do have some adjustments, Mr. Chairman.
Adjustments, okay.
We will be removing from the agenda all items related to solid waste, that would be items 11, G, H, and I.
Okay.
We're going to postpone those and take, take up those in December.
Why? I like it.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to do approve by Commissioner Bill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Making it easy tonight. Any reports, presentations? All right, hold business. Discussion regarding the contract for architectural services for Highlands Pre-K. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, we did receive authorization on October 18th to begin negotiations for the Highlands Pre-K project. That was at our joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and Board of Education. In receiving that direction, we have been able to negotiate a contract for the Highlands Pre-K. We have Ms. Emily Kite with LS3P with us here tonight, available to answer any questions. The scope of the services are, is that, as you'll see in Exhibit A of the contract that you have before you, outlines the scope of the services that have been discussed, that were discussed among the two boards the night of the 18th, that make up this project. The estimated budget for this project is 4.7 million, and that has led to a negotiated architect fee of $329,255. That is split across six different phases, starting with schematic design and finishing with closeout. We did model this contract after the Franklin High School contract. We requested LS3P make some changes, which were included in the agenda packet, the email that I had sent to Ms. Kite requesting those changes after review from administration and our county attorney. LS3P has made the requested changes, and now it is, we're presenting this contract to the board tonight. So Emily, if you have anything to add, and we're certainly able to answer any questions that this board might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. I know just from the vote, the three to two vote of our last, before we decided to remove, to move forward regarding the contract for architectural services, we had a, not a unanimous vote, it was a three to two vote. So there was some, a little controversy on this board about whether or not to move forward. I personally am 100% in support of it. Number one, because I represent District One, which is where Highlands is, and number two is, is my wife sitting here, she's poured her life into Pre-K for Highlands, so there's a number of reasons that I'm in support of this moving forward. Any other questions, comments?
Emily, do you think it'll take till May to get everything up and going?
I think so. We talked about it a little bit on our side, our team today, actually, and I would hope we could... order for the school year and normal operations. So there's some intention and effort on our end to try to make that go a little bit faster if we can.
And the classroom renovation, you know, that's just as important as anything. That's, how many classrooms, remind me how many classrooms are gonna be renovated?
Well, we are renovating two classrooms for Pre-K.
Right.
And then there's some additional classrooms that we need to build to
The new construction.
Offset the classrooms that were reallocated to Pre-K use.
What was the total again?
The total project budget is 4.7. The architectural fee is $329,255. That's 7%.
And I'm sure there's a payment schedule in here somewhere?
Well, the contract is structured. The AIA contract is structured in a way, and the way we have chosen to move forward with Franklin High School project is the AIA contract is split up into six phases. You have the schematic design phase, the design development phase, construction documents phase, procurement phase, construction phase, and closeout phase, as listed on Exhibit A in your contract in the back. As you'll notice, each one of these phases have a percentage. With the Franklin High School project, we have chosen to authorize different phases. In other words, we completed the, we authorized the schematic design phase for the main campus. We authorized through design development for the athletic complex portion. If the board so chooses to pursue this contract in that manner, there has been the latitude, has been built into this contract to allow this board to do that. In other words, eat the elephant one bite at a time, so to speak. If we see the schematic design, review the schematic design, then authorize moving forward into design development, then authorize, once we move forward into construction documents, you know, that's when we got a pretty good feeling where we're moving forward with the project. We're gonna get those construction documents together, that's whenever that phase can be authorized. Or they can certainly, you can certainly authorize the entire payment. It's how, the contract gives you the latitude. Through our negotiations, we gave you the latitude to do it however you want it to do it. If you wanted to eat the elephant one bite at a time, you're able to do that. If you want to go ahead and move forward with the entire contract, you're able to do that, too.
So we're looking at 2223 budget would be a third of the cost, would be in next year's budget.
Well, the whole, it depends, I mean, if you're gonna approve the contract, you're gonna have to appropriate the entire amount of funds.
Right.
The entire 329 is gonna have to be appropriated.
And the way it's laid out, they would be finished, I mean, not completely finished, but took one of them to be pre-ordered, that you have to appropriate the full sum.
So is this like on a draw schedule, where they'll come before us and ask for 10%? They'll come back before us?
No, if we author, in other words, if we authorize the schematic design phase, what they'll do is, we would set aside, if the board says we only want to authorize through design development, then that's gonna be 25% of that 329255 number. So you authorize that 25%. Then what happens is, the architect firm will pre-audit that amount, and the architecture firm will then begin working and invoice us based on the percentage they are complete. So when, if they start working on the project, they'll send us an invoice at 20% complete, invoice at 40% complete. But again, if this board says, you know, we wanna, so that's how, that's how it's billed. It just, the amount that, the total amount would depend on how many of these six phases the board authorizes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we authorize the contract that presented with all phases, and the 329255 be taken out of fund balance. And our finance officer will control, take that money out and set it aside and put it in a, in the draw schedule, as we've done in previous projects.
And if we, if we could, if you could, Mr. Bill, add to the motion that it would be contingent upon the school board's approval of the scope of services in the contract?
Contingent upon the school board agreement. So good.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion, questions, comments?
I would just like to say that I know it's necessary, and Lord knows I've struggled with this one. I mean, as to the three to two vote that Chairman Tate brought up, and
Listen, it's hard, it's
It's not that I don't think they need it. I mean, I know they need it. And it's, I've been, I've contacted a lot this week about this. I think a lot of it is the process. I have reservations about allocating that much money, you know, when this board is essentially the swing vote, is not running for reelection. So, you know, I have a hard time tying up that much money, you know, before the new board. I would prefer to phase it, just so the money doesn't get allocated and tied up, but I'd love for the school board to make this as one of their main priorities on the capital outlay plan, and you would have my full support. So, so it is what it is, but I just felt like I needed to say that.
It's my swan song.
All right, right there with Josh. Just, we never heard about this. It is a worthy project, anything for education that approves. And my grandchildren just went through Pre-K at Iowa, have issues with Pre-K. But we never heard about this until like six months ago. And as I stated, it sounded like a broken record, but it was not included in the capital improvement plan. In other words, the Board of Education never saw it worthy of ranking in their, submitted of their capital improvement plan last year. And then all of a sudden, we take it up, and it's gotten into a political, emotional roller coaster along with a high school. And that's not how you legislate or construct budgets, in my feeble opinion, humble opinion. So I can't vote for it simply because it was not a recommendation by the Board of Education. And now we're taking over, making recommendations for that board, and that's not our role. So with that, I will respectfully vote no. And I agree with Josh in the fact that this is structured, that we vote or approve each phase of, six phases, and it's designed for the sitting board to approve phases as they turn, as they're completing. I like that approach. There is a scape clause in this contract, it's a standard. So I could not see, I could see doing the 10%, but to do the whole outlay of $329,000 without any designs or anything, I couldn't do it. So I'll be voting no on this, but I'm not saying it's not a worthy project, but go back to the Board of Education, start over on prioritizations.
Just a reminder, Mr. Chairman, as we heard at our last meeting at the Fine Arts Center, the school board, this would never have been on their capital outlay program.
They should never
As far as, as far as, as far as Pre-K goes, because the school really don't have nothing to do with Pre-K. So even though we have rooms in our, in Macon County down, down off the mountain, we've got several rooms for Pre-K, but the school board does not, you've never saw that on the capital outlay program, anything to do with Pre-K from the school, from the school board. So the other renovations of the classrooms are just probably as important as the Pre-K. So with that, we just wanted to remind everybody that as far as saying, from a capital outlay perspective, you would have never seen the word Pre-K from the school board.
All right. Anything else? All in favor, second by a standing hand, raising your right hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll let the record reflect the three to two vote. Shields, Bill, Tate in favor, Young, and Higdon, opposed. Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to any other old business, nothing on the agenda, moving on to new business. Resolution for Operation Green Light honoring veterans. Veteran Services Director Lee Tabor-Holbrooks.
Welcome, Lee. So this is a present, a resolution designated Macon County as a green light for Veterans County, and declaring November 7th through November 11th, it's time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Welcome.
Thank you. First, can I just say real quick how many veterans we've got in here? I know we've got Mr. Shields, Mr. Higden, Ms. Asher. Anybody else, veterans? Yeah, so you can see, we got a lot of, a lot of veterans in our presence tonight, and with it being Veterans Day this Friday. The National Association of Counties and the National Associations of County Veteran Service Officers work together to do Operation Green Light, basically to show our support for veterans in our community. So I want to read this to you. Whereas the residents of Macon County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly, selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and the sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Macon County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, Vietnam veterans of America, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas the Macon County, excuse me, whereas Macon County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel, and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for veterans, Macon County hereby declares from November 7th through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Macon County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business and residence. So
Thank you.
We have green bulbs on our building. We've got green bulbs senior services. Lowe's has set on a special display, so if anybody wants to purchase a green bulb for their home or their business, feel free to do so. We just want to support our veterans, because we know what a major player they are in this county and our freedom and the ability to be here right now. And thank you, Commissioner Tate, for your service and for always being supportive of our office and our veterans.
I get 70 compliments on your office.
Oh, thank you.
It's really unbelievable.
Well deserved.
Thank you.
Lee, you and Kristi need to stand up. We veterans know if it wasn't for these two ladies here, we'd be in trouble. The veterans would be.
Exactly.
Be in trouble. But all the work y'all do, keep a record straight, it's much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Higden, all in favor of the resolution. Standing by, standing aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Bit of history on Armistice Day. You and I are old enough to remember Armistice Day. These kids out here aren't. And on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month
Yep.
Of 1918, the Allied forces in Germany agreed to end bombing and fighting. And hence came Armistice Day, now Veterans Day. So 20 million people succumbed to that war. It was like Leah said, give us the freedom and the fortune to live in America in freedom, and we've never done enough for those. Thank you, Lynn.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you.
And keep a tune out for, I'm sure we're probably going to go to the Fine Arts Center for the program, but we'll fire that up with Warren, and some of them we're gonna be doing it Thursday. So be on the listen for the new change, a place where we're gonna be instead of downtown here, the weather, due to the weather.
And I'm glad our schools are
Amen.
Because I'll be at Iowa School, my granddaughter's Veterans Day, simply to retain these children.
You're correct. School is not happening that day.
Pardon?
They're out that day, on Friday.
On Friday, but the, oh, that's Friday, 11th is when we're celebrating.
Yes.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday at the elementary schools.
Right.
All right, consideration of release. A performance guarantee for Phase One development for Gemstone Village subdivision. Planning Director, Mr. Joe Allen, welcome, Joe.
Good evening.
Hey, Joe.
On January 11th, 2022, Ms. Joanne Snyder, developer of Gemstone Village subdivision, entered into a performance guarantee agreement with Macon County for Phase One of that subdivision for $617,119. On June 22nd, we released $373,117, that performance guarantee money back to her. And I think you guys all have a letter in there from Ms. Snyder's engineers stating that that work is done, and I've been on site myself, the work from Phase One is done. So she is requesting that remaining money that's being held in conjunction with Phase One, which is $244,002, be released back to her. And I recommend we give that money back to her.
Are those funds held in an interest bank?
They're put into County's general account, which does earn interest, but we've never paid anybody interest on
That's a lory question. I just take the check and get it to her.
Yes, we do have to deposit the check, and it is in an interest-bearing account.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion on the floor to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Higden, all in favor.
Maybe someone needs to, oh, sorry. Didn't know.
No, no, go ahead.
Maybe someone needs to look at in the future on these large amounts like that, over a period of time, a year, there is some interest. And as a person who's invested in Macon County, they're losing money a lot. I mean, it's
Yeah.
They need to look at that.
Yeah.
The next one that comes up, let's discuss that.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, that was for Phase One. Same thing for Phase Two. Consideration for release of performance guarantee for Phase Two development for Gemstone Village subdivision.
Now, this one's a little bit different, just so we know. So, let's see, on, I don't remember the date, but we entered into a performance guarantee agreement with Ms. Snyder again for Phase Two of Gemstone Village. Ms. Snyder has not began work on that phase yet, but she does not wish to move forward with it now, and is requesting, at this time, and is requesting that we release that money back to her. She, there's a letter in there in your packet, I believe, that stating that she understands that she'll have to go through this again, once she decides to move forward, or if she decides to move forward with that phase. But I recommend, it's her money, I recommend we give it back to her if she doesn't want to do it.
How much is that one?
That one is 700, let's see. That's correct. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Higden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes.
Thank you for your investment in our county. Thank you. Appreciate you.
We're coming back.
I'll be back.
We'll be back.
Appreciate you.
All right. Discussion on Sutton Broadcasting and Blue Ridge Broadcasting subleases for Cali Bald. Emergency Services Director, Mr. Warren Kaye, welcome, Warren. You know, Warren, I couldn't compliment you earlier, I think I was about to lose it there.
Well, I was thinking
We've been working together a long time.
I was thinking back there, whenever you left the employment in Macon County, I don't think we even had email back then, so I think you mailed me a letter, you sent me a letter, correct?
Yeah.
And I think I called you.
I think I faxed it.
I think I called you, and I tried to talk you out of it, to make, because we were really stable, it was a good job, we paid really well, and I didn't want you to make a mistake for your family going into this whole landscaping thing.
I remember that.
So I guess, apparently you figured it out. So I guess you did.
Yeah, got it figured out.
You did, all right.
So Warren for 15, 15 years.
Yeah. So, this time last year, we were up here, we were discussing our subleases with Blue Ridge Broadcasting and Sutton Broadcasting for the location of their equipment on our site on Cali Bald. And at the time, you all agreed to a one-year extension of their lease or a sublease for them. And that sublease is going to expire at the end of December. At the time, you asked me to come back and At the time, you asked me to come back and have a little more information for y'all to consider. So we've done that. I actually have some folks here tonight that are going to talk as soon as I get finished. But basically, the overview of the agreements we have, of course, that's US Forest Service site. Macon County has a lease for the communication site there, and then we sublease, or we can sublease a location inside our facility for other organizations, which is what we're doing here. We have two of those, both of these are commercial accounts. Sutton Broadcasting, there's copies of last year's leases in your agenda packet, but just to remind the board, last year, the agreement was for $500 a month for Sutton Broadcasting, $250 a month for Blue Ridge Broadcasting. Now, last year, the questions you also asked me about expenses that we have up there. Typically, we don't have to pay the US Forest Service any kind of a fee for the use of that site because we're public safety, but once we go into a commercial entity, or we have a commercial entity that's in our facility, we get kicked into that fee schedule that the US government has for those. And it's a little complicated, but it's based on the highest value client or customer that you have in your facility, which in this case is going to be either one of the, either one of the radio stations, which means that annually, we pay $1,600 and some change to the US Forest Service. It changed this year a couple of $20 or something like that. So we anticipate we will get a bill sometime in the next couple of weeks for this year. It'll probably be just a shade over $1,600 somewhere in that neighborhood, but that's typically what we pay for the US Forest Service. As far as our operational costs on that facility, we can't really divide it out to what they might cost us extra over everything else, because obviously, we have 1 meter, they do use a little bit of power, but not a whole lot. And then we have a backup generator, we have a big propane tank that we fill up up there to run a backup generator if power goes out and have a little bit of maintenance. So when you look at all those figures combined, it costs us a little under $3,000 a year to operate that site. So our total expenses are about $4,600, a little less than $5,000 to operate that site. So, and before we get too far into this discussion, I don't know if you want to actually take any action tonight, or if you want to defer it till the next meeting, but let me remind the board that per statutes, if you do a lease that is one year or less, you can actually approve it tonight. If it's more than one year, up to 10 years, that requires a legal posting, which means we have to put it in a newspaper, that we will possibly be entering into, or we're entering discussions with an organization for a lease, and we have to pass it by resolution, which means we'd have to defer that to the December meeting. And if you go over 10 years, 10 years, over 10 years, it actually has to have formal bids. So keep all of that in mind tonight when you talk to these folks, when you think this through, because there is a process we'll have to go through, depending on what kind of term that you would like to extend. Are there any questions made before I turn it over to?
What's their fee schedule? What's rent?
Rent, Sutton Broadcasting pays $500 a month, and Blue Ridge Broadcasting pays $250 a month.
And what do we got on that tower?
We have all of our paging equipment for the northern end of the county, which is fire, we have backup law enforcement repeaters, all of our UHF radio equipment. When we moved over to the Viper system, we kept all of that other stuff operational, because if it ever went down, we can always flip back over to the other one. So all of our, what we call our legacy equipment, is still there. So all of our public safety stuff is still there. And there's also, there's a couple of Cali Fire Department, there's a couple of other of our contracted agencies that are in that facility too that are public safety.
Did you say the Forest Service is $1,600 a year or a month?
$1,600 a year.
And they're based on a monthly, no, Sutton and Blue Ridge, are they monthly or yearly?
They're monthly, yes. And the Forest Service is really hard for me to explain, because they have this really complicated fee schedule, and they look at, we do an inventory every year, they look at who's in your facility, and they pick the highest value one, and it has a fee structure that the US government goes by, and that's where that $1,600 number comes from. Other than that, I can't explain to you how they get there, but that's the number that they throw at us.
So is my arithmetic right, Warren, that with the rental income is $9,000 a year?
Yes.
And our outlay is approximately $5,000 a year, so.
That's correct.
We're netting $4,000 on the tower, and services Macon County with essential services. I mean, very much so.
Yeah, and $3,000, that's a typical year. We had a, I believe it was wine springs, everything we have on those sites, we have the regular utility power which comes in. We have the generator system, which is the first backup in case the power goes out. And everything else is also battery backed up. We have big banks of, they're D9 Dozer batteries that are in there that runs that stuff for a period of time in case both of those other options go bad. This year, those batteries, if I'm not mistaken, I think those batteries were $500 and some change apiece, and I think we changed six of them on wine springs. So the $3,000 is your typical normal year.
What's your recommendation on the lease?
I don't have any.
Year since this board is sitting here is familiar, and that would give, if there's any new board members, I know there's going to be one, at least.
I have had no issues with their equipment there. We've had no interference issues, we have had no problems whatsoever with him. The space that it has taken up really hasn't affected us any. That facility is actually divided into sections. There's three sections to that building. We'll have our section, Jackson County has a section, and then you have your other clients. So it's actually split into different locations up there in the same building. So I don't have an issue with the term. My suggestion would be, if you get 10 years and over, it gets complicated with the formal bids. It's easier for Eric and I if we stay under 10 years, but we'll do whatever the board would like to do.
Warren, remind me, and I know this came about, it was sometime during my term of service, I just can't remember when. Was it seven years ago, five years ago? When did this first come up, when they?
Seven.
Seven years ago. And the reasoning, if I remember right, it was to give Macon County better, but it also opened up communications and the radio to Jackson County, that area. Sure.
My name is Art Sutton with Sutton Broadcasting, greetings from Toccoa, Georgia, and dogs. We bought the radios, and let me introduce Terry Carter. He and I own the radio stations. We bought them in 2001. If you recall, our FM station was on 96.7, and the antenna FM signals is totally line of sight. So if you're in the mountains and you're in a big hole, as we were, the coverage was very limited. You mentioned the forestry service is hard to explain, but we worked 14 years to get another frequency that would allow us to go on Cali-Bald, and we thought getting a tower from the forestry service would be no problem. And then we met the forestry service. Commissioner Tate, I thank you personally for being involved back then and helping us get that done. And Commissioner Bill, I believe Commissioner Higgins was on the board when it first started, but the process was approved in July 2015. So we, after 14 years of work with the FCC, they finally approved after moving two other stations off the frequency. Long story short, though, is the county was putting up a new communications tower, the whole heavier emergency communications equipment. I can't remember, I turned 62 months ago, so I can't remember what happened three months ago. I was thinking that initially, the county was going to take that tower down, and that was one option. And so when we brought this issue before the county, graciously, y'all worked with us, and we were able to use the top of the tower. Blue Ridge, I'm here on their behalf tonight, they took one of the frequencies that we didn't need, and they're able to repeat their WMIT out of Black Mountain. So we had a five-year term, and it ended, coincided with the county's ground lease ending with the forestry service, which has been renewed. And the new fee that they charged is something that's only been in place for a couple of years, and caught us about the time we were wanting to renew the lease for another five-year term. And I have no, I don't want to cause y'all any problems going over 10 years, I'll be happy to cooperate. The problem with a one-year lease is with all the detailed work and studies that are now required, if we were to go like on another tower up there, it takes us over a year now just to get studies completed. You have to do studies on interference to FAA, navigation equipment. So really, for a 60-year-old man, I'd rest better if I could get like five years. But in consideration of that, we don't want to cost the county the costs we're there. So we would be happy to add to the fee reimbursing the county the $1,600 a year. Blue Ridge has agreed that they would reimburse us a third of that. And we've also recently, in negotiating new leases with other stations we own, a 2% to 3% annual escalator is now become common practice, which wasn't when we started this. And we'd be happy to do that as well. If you could consider giving us maybe a five-year renewal with an option review in another five years, if that keeps us under the 10 years.
Would you be willing to share with us a fee schedule on another tower? I mean, are we in line with what you see?
Well, I am working with a religious operation to use another tower at Cali-Bald, and the fee was $500, the Crown Castle. And they do have the annual escalator of 2% or 3%, which is why I think it's only fair that we offer that to the county.
No, it's a big business, renting space on towers nationwide.
It is particularly for cellular companies. They utilize seven or eight different frequencies. And the broadcast companies are leased, our signal is 115 watts, so we're able to use a single antenna on 104.1 and then another antenna of 104.9, and it weighs about 40 pounds. So it's a whole different type of installation. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to use the old tower.
Warren, has our rate changed with the Forest Service over the past seven years?
Has it changed?
Yeah, it's been that same amount.
It's changed maybe $20 a year, but it's always within $1,500 to $1,600. The only, the only other thing that I can 100% tell you, the FCC, the US Forest Service sent out a request for opinions, that they were discussing possibly charging a site fee for to cover somebody to come look at their sites, which I'm not sure what that is. But as far as I know, that has never made it through any of the legislature anywhere at the federal level. That can pop up at some point, but I have no clue that that would impact any of us at this point.
Warren, am I correct, though, that the charge to the county began maybe, it's not been going on the whole time, has it?
Um, I'm like you, I don't remember when we first started.
I think it's two, three years, because it's really, they've had a lot of pushback, because it's all across the country, the morning and.
I don't remember when we first discussed this, it came in right about the time we did this.
Yeah, it would have been probably around October 2020, I guess.
The only other thing I would caution the board, and we don't mind if we have to do formal bids to go over 10, I mean, that's doable, it's just more of a process. But I will caution the board that if you do, under North Carolina statutes, when you do a lease term and then you do automatic extensions, if you did a, say you did a 10-year lease and a 10-year extension, that's a 20-year lease. So you have to be careful that even if you did a five and a five, that's 10 or less. Just remember, you still got to, the magic number's 10 if you don't want to.
We would stay under the 10, that's my hope.
So five and five would work good.
Five and four in 11 months.
So I guess, Mr. Trump, you need a motion to allow the county attorney and the county manager to work with Sutton Broadcasting and Blue Ridge and enter into an agreement with a lease of five years, not to exceed 10 years with the stipulations outlined by Mr. Sutton, with the expenses, and authorize the county attorney and Warren and Mr. Sutton and the folks from Blue Ridge to execute a new lease for five years?
Public hearing next month.
You actually don't have, it actually doesn't have to have a public hearing, it just has to be posted. We have to advertise that we are considering entering into a lease with them in the appropriate newspaper, obviously, and other methods. And then we just have to have the resolution, which we have the resolution already from last year, so it's not.
Which will be approved at the December.
It would just need to be approved at the December meeting.
Resolution, new lease at the December. Y'all can work out the fine details.
Yes.
Do you need that motion to authorize the county attorney and?
I hate to speak for somebody, but I think consensus for us to do it is fine.
The actions will happen at the December meeting, I would think, with the resolution and the new lease being presented to the board and voted upon.
I can't imagine you board members not being part of this, because it's safety, it's about safety in our county, and it's, I can't imagine another board member or members to come in and want to change this. So I think they would agree that this is an appropriate motion here for the people of Macon County, for the emergency services that's rendered.
So I will leave the formal motion, it will be on the record.
All right, we have a motion. My Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Young. Discussion, I got a couple of things. I came in tonight with the mindset that, I knew that it hadn't changed, but I was asking those questions for public records, and I knew the rate had changed. But I came with the mindset tonight that, gosh, prices have escalated, that's such an asset to y'all, that I was thinking, just to protect our taxpayers, that the rate of that lease needed to go up. But knowing that the Forest Service hasn't changed there as much, I have a little bit different opinion about it. Going back to my comments from earlier tonight, don't make a rash decision until you gather all the information. So I have a little bit of change of heart about it. But what I would like to see, Mr. Attorney, if you're drawing these papers up for us, is that ensuring that if anything happens to the Forest Service, that we're not held liable by any reasons if that lease is pulled, we've got to remove it. Or if a hurricane comes through and it gets torn down, that we're not obligated to y'all, I don't think the county should be obligated to rebuild that tower necessarily.
Yeah, that's pretty.
And it may be in there already, I don't know, but I'm just trying to look after the county, I have interest on that.
There's actually a clause in there, if our expenses exceed $6,000 with the Forest Service, then that rate adjusts with that as well. That lease on Cali-Bald is good through '20, '35, or '37. Because I told you last time, I'd never do another one up there.
And did that include cost escalation?
Well, it will when he does. We're just authorized with the county attorney, and it'll be.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you both.
Let me just give two does to our local radio station and to Sean Gibson and the job that he does. And if you listened to the ballgame last Friday night from Rowan County, they done it, everything boiled up down there, you know. Of course, that's Rowan, if you've never been, you ever been to Rowan?
No, we have several of those.
Don't go. Yeah, don't go. But they done it with cell phones. You know, they improvised, and because there's a lot of us that didn't want to drive to Salisbury again, ever. But they improvised, they used their cell phones, and they just do a great job.
Thank you.
So if you want to give Gibson, I wouldn't give him no raise, but I mean, but he needs to be thanked for the job that they did.
Sean is a, he's been in the company for 30 years, and his dream was to someday be in Franklin, so we're happy he's able to be here.
We're glad he's here, we're glad you're here.
He's a big asset to us, especially the veterans, he takes care of us.
Thank y'all, safe travels to Toccoa and.
I didn't tell you that Terry serves on the Toccoa City Commission, so you want to give with him on natural gas rates? He's your guy.
Thank you both, making the trip up here. Listen, listen to me babble earlier. All right, resolution to apply for public transportation program funds in Macon Transit Director, Ms. Arlene Ash. Welcome, Arlene.
Thank you. I'm just asking for a resolution that will authorize the county manager to be able to submit grant applications and enter with NC DOT whenever they call out for calls for projects.
We've got a motion to approve the resolution. Any questions?
Are you liaison?
Paul is.
Paul is?
I was having the other meetings.
I will make the motion.
Paul makes the motion, I'll second.
Thank you.
So we got, was that a motion? I'm sorry. I was reading, I missed it if it was.
Satisfy Mr. Bill.
Got a motion, my Commissioner Higdon, second my Commissioner Shills, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, darling.
Thank you, darling.
Thank you, Darlene.
All right, site approval for pickleball courts at Macon County Recreation Park, Park Recreation Director, Mr. Seth Adams, welcome, Seth.
Hey, good evening.
I'm at the bathroom right in the middle of your show here, Seth.
I'll sit won't be long.
You'll do a quick here now, quick bathroom break or not?
I'm happy to call a quick recess.
Yeah, I was just...
Five-minute recess, five-minute recess. Five-minute recess, five-minute recess. All right, Seth.
Good evening. Before we get started, Mr. Tate, I'd like to thank you personally. On behalf of the rec park, you've served as certainly a zone for eleven years and we saw a lot of a lot of growth in our department and on our part, we would, we'd like to say thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, that's been very successful, that's for sure.
Yep. So let's talk about pickleball. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport, recreational sport in the country and has been for the, for the last four years. I read a stat today that over 4.8 million people play and that's just people that are, that are members of clubs that they can track. That's not counting the, just the people that show up and play. We get numerous calls, day in and day out, new folks that are wanting to get into pickleball. So it is, it is definitely growing in our area also. The average age in the country of a pickleball player is thirty-eight. Three years ago, it was forty-one. So the average age is, is dropping. So it's not just a senior activity. It is something that young folks are wanting to get into. That's where we have our problem here. We have three indoor courts in the community center. We've got four at Parker Meadows on the outside. But both of those facilities can only be used in the morning time. And we've still got a considerable working class that would like to play too. And that's what we're trying to do is build designated courts for those folks also. And it'll relieve pressure of people trying to play out of Parker Meadows with basketball going down both sides of them and everything, all the normal complaints that I get. We, we started the process of trying to find some locations. And as you, you've got a handout, the top four were in the property above the dog park in Frog Town. There was a possibility to do them at the Whitmire property. And the plateau below the, below the pool, there's that area beside the, the big baseball field there. And also on the softball field. As you can see, the softball field clicks all the criteria. There is no real negative to that, to that site. Because we can shrink the softball field down. It's just used for youth practice now and that, that's a 280-foot field. So we can move basically home plate up to where third base is and have a pretty good stretch of, of flat ground as you can see by that map, down the first base line. Without having to do too much work. You're not going to have any grading other than scraping the top layer of grass off. The pickleball folks actually said literally take as least amount of, of surface that you can off to get the grass off and then pile the rock on top. We'll need six to eight inches of gravel and then two to three inches of asphalt on top of that. The size is approximately 250 feet long by 64 feet wide for eight courts.
Interesting. Highlands took some of their tennis courts and turned them into pickleball.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
Then, that's all you hear.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
Daylight till dark.
Did you watch the documentary on pickleball? The guy invented in his driveway?
No.
Didn't get a dime out of it.
He's a good player. He's a pretty good player.
He was older than that. He was grand young. He, he built it.
Presume you, I'm, I'm asking for public information. Recre, or the Recreation Commission approved this unanimously.
Yes. I, I first went all these sites before I even took it to the rec commission. We've got a local pickleball association, which we've got a couple of members here. I, I wanted to get their feedback before I took it even to the step, to the, to the rec commission to get their, their okay. And, and they all looked at the site and agreed that that would be a, a good place. I met Jack Morgan out there to walk the sites just on a construction standpoint. And, and out of all the sites, that was, that was what he deemed was, was the best one. Then I took it to the rec commission and the rec commission agreed that, that that was the site.
Just out of curiosity, when you move that home plate to third base?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know who plays out there. Back in the day when we played out there, if you moved that home plate, we'd fill that creek full of softball.
Yeah.
And you'd have had a real expense trying to replace those balls.
Yeah, well, no, no adults play there anymore. It's all, it's all youth.
Is it baseball or softball?
It's, it's both. It's mostly softball, girls softball league, little league softball plays out there. Ninety percent of the time, there are a couple of baseball teams that, that'll practice out there too. But the same teams, the age, this field will still be a little bit bigger than the one at the community building. And they, they never hit them, hit them out of that park. So I don't, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I met with Justin Moffett out there and he, he didn't, he's, he's the president of, of girls softball. He didn't have a problem with, with sharing that facility.
Church league doesn't play there?
No, church league, they all, everybody plays at Parker Meadows. Every game that we have is, is at Parker Meadows now.
So you've got some money, right Seth?
Yes, yeah. We've got $155,000 set aside for, for pickleball courts.
And these courts, you know, we will see the water come right through the middle in dugouts. It's been there before. So will, will water, if it, when it floods, and it will, will it hurt the, will it hurt the court?
It, it won't get on these before it does the tennis courts. So it gets on the tennis courts and washes out, you know, pretty, pretty regular. I have not saw water, even in the, well, I take that back. Peaks Creek, it, it covered everything in the park. But even the, the high water floods that we have now, water gets into that parking lot, but it doesn't get onto the infield. It, it may touch where the third base is a little bit, but it doesn't go up, up that way anymore.
They'll right up the curve for the curvy river.
Yeah. And since they have done all the construction on the Georgia road, they've obviously fixed drainage because even the, the outfield, the right field doesn't stay nowhere near as wet as what it, it used to ten years ago. The grass was that swamp grass. We never could get a good stand of grass. But now it's, it's, it's hard as a rock like everything else is.
What are you looking for, Mr. Shields?
Just want to say a few things. I talked to Seth about him just a minute ago briefly, but I feel like it's my job, sitting here, to just bring him up. But I share the same concerns Ronnie does with the water right there. And I just, I feel like if I seen a pickleball, I wouldn't be able to identify it. I don't even know what pickleball is. But if it's that hot and that up and coming, you know, again, I look at Parker Meadows, I look at some of these other places and I see, you know, a lot of kids, dog walkers, baseball, softball, soccer. So Seth and I had a healthy conversation of some issues, but pros and cons. I just worry about sticking it on the back corner lot there. Those bathrooms, one of the largest complaints I get are drug use in the bathrooms. They're always locked. And so I just worry about, you know, the condition of those bathrooms, the condition of the seniors, and then the rainwater. But if that's what the commission decides and you guys are all 100% on board, you know, I'm not the one to...
Well, and to bring up the bathroom issue, the, the two bathrooms on the back side that, that service that field are small. They, they do not make ADA. But we don't need that concession stand anymore. So what me and Jack Morgan had, had kind of talked about was putting two ADA-accessible bathrooms on the front where the old concession stand was in that building. Relatively inexpensive, you put a, a concrete wall dividing the two and then cut a door and you've got plenty of space to, for the, the turn radius for, for a wheelchair or anything else. So that, where the two bathrooms are on the back, we'll touch them up a little bit, but the front side will turn into two. So there'll be four solo bathrooms in that building.
Just for public sake, would you share with me maybe you derive about the grant of Parker Meadows and the surface area of why we can't go to Parker Meadows?
Yeah, Parker Meadows, part of the grant funding, you got points for having various different activities. So we got points for having a, a basketball court and baseball court, baseball fields, that shelter, various things on there. And, and part of that was, was open space. Open space is just a big open spot where people can throw frisbee, walk a dog, go football, you know, do, do whatever you want to without having it being tied or fenced in to a sport. Right now, it looks like a soccer field because there are soccer goals on, on both sides of that area right behind the basketball court. But technically, that's part of the open space of that park. We can, we can remove those basketball, or those, those soccer goals and nothing would change. Nothing would change that area at all.
Are these lit?
It, it, it can be lit, yes. The same lights that, that light the field now will light these courts.
Do you have them all on?
Uh, you... More than likely, yeah. I think it would, it would cast a funny shadow.
We're going to go through the same tennis court right now.
Yeah.
About the lighting.
Mm-hmm. I, I think that we're, we're about to get that problem fixed. At the tennis courts, we, we found a, a switch that is easier than, than it's just the panel box. And we'll be able to do the same things on these courts. So I, I don't think that lighting will be a...
They'll be used in the summer.
I, I guarantee it. There'll be people on these all the time. And that's, that's one of the good things about this site too is that people will be able to see them from 4:41. I mean, you, you won't be able to miss them driving down the highway.
One other question I got Seth, where are you going to put the other dugout?
The, the other dugouts...
Me and Jackie went to build, by the way.
Well, the one down the first base line will, will need to be removed. But I think we can keep the one on the third base.
Where you going to put that?
When teams practice, they'll, they'll still use it.
But you said with just one dugout?
Yes, one dugout for that field. We, we won't play games there. I mean, every, every game now is at Parker Meadows. So all, all that dugout will be used as for the, the teams that are there to practice.
We can see the day when they might be more tennis courts, more, that might change the whole area here.
Possibly.
You never know.
Yeah.
I'd just like to remind the board, what Seth is, is doing here tonight is one step in the process. He's, as he mentioned, there's 155,000 appropriated towards this project. Basically, before he went any further with it, he did want to share with the board the location and get consensus from the board on using this location. So he can then begin to go get pricing together and get some more particulars on the project that will also have to come before this board be approved, depending on the amounts and that nature, the type of approval that could be required.
And my only concern is it's, it's, it's changing the use of the, as hard as we fought, as hard as you fought, I remember we were practicing softball out in your...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Flat pine roots that big.
Yeah.
You fought hard to get adequate flat spots.
Yeah.
With infields for these kids and stuff. And it just, I mean, that's been, that was an expensive development right there. And, you know, I agree that, yeah, if we do this pickleball stuff, but...
We're not taking away any, any practice, we're not taking away any fields that we have at all.
But it's altering the appearance and that, that, you know, it's, I mean, it's changing, it's changing things there. Why are these fields not being used now? Is the demand not there for some, I've heard?
They are being used. I mean, we, there, there, there's teams practicing them all night. We just don't play games there. Because we can house every game at, at Parker Meadows. No, there's, there'll be two practices a night there all spring.
And you're going to fence the pickleball court?
Yes.
You know, we're just moving the fence over.
Yeah.
We talked about. Well, it's a shame we don't have another flat piece of property that, I mean, see the value of this. We're trying to save money. But we're taking up a part of the softball field. It's named real estate. Anything up around the library in that area?
Not that has the bathrooms already and, you know, that, that can be lit already. And that's accessible to, to, I mean, we've got a, we've got a guy stationed at that park, you know, that, that handles the maintenance. So we don't have to travel to another site.
And to see us start a new venture or new sport and, and kind of piecemeal it, you know, when wind out. Or the, you know, this is going to strictly be an outdoor, an outdoor venue here. These folks live here all year. They won't play in the winter.
Yeah.
And I understand the expensive, it would be, it would not be prudent to put a building in a flood plain.
Yeah.
But, you know, once the courts are built, it's, it would be an expensive proposition. But to enclose those, I mean, it'd be a whole lot easier if we had a suitable site that's out of the flood plain and that all of the geographical benefit, you know, I mean, good high ground.
But it is, am I safe in saying the people that play outside don't want to play inside? If, if the weather is, it's...
Unless it's raining or freezing.
It, it's, it's two different kinds of, I guess it's, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's...
We, our president of the, of the committee has been out there during rain because I was, I worked for the rec park. I, I knew about the rain coming on that, on that field. And so I was against it to be in with. But he's been out there with all these rains that's come in this summer and, and, because we, he was worried about it too. And he said, "I've been right there where they're going to put them. There is no water whatsoever." So we've been out there scoping it out just to make sure. I called J.C., who used to do the ball fields. I said, "Jay, what, what do we do? That field floods." He said, "With that work coming through there, it's not going to flood now."
But you play the sport during December, January?
We play all year.
You play February, January. If it's really 30 degrees or more.
They play.
If it's raining or something.
It is.
If you've never, if you've never seen them.
They complain too after the houses.
Everybody that I've talked to that says they're going to go try it. They're addicted to it now. I'm scared to try it because I can't...
Have you tried it, Seth?
Nah, I, I have played one time when, when, whenever it first took off and...
You can do it, Seth. Now I might be.
You may, you may be able to.
That's one of the things that's so nice. It is, it is, it is an easy sport to pick up, you know. People that can't play tennis, people that have never played a record sport have picked this up and, and love it. And so it's a fun thing. And we're just looking for an opportunity to play more regularly without putting somebody out.
Yeah.
And, and at the same time, open it up for younger people who are working during the day and can't get there in the mornings.
What do you need to move with?
I can't play.
Just consensus on the location.
We start at seven in the morning. So I can play till nine and then go to work. Otherwise, we're dropping the case and play. And now with gas the way it is, we can't drop the ball every night. We just came back from Raleigh. This is a gold medal one, if you see the paper. Take a look. We brought 14 medals back from Raleigh.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
Now what is the, what's the rub between outdoor and indoor courts? Uh, I'd be, I'd just like to be outside. Plus with the whole virus thing, it being closed. Franklin's, Franklin's gym is so tight there with three courts. You just can't get away from people. And I just like being outside, especially in the environment we're living in today where you want to be careful. And I just enjoy being outside in sunshine.
Everybody go to the location?
Yes, sir. I hate to say that here, I'm willing to sacrifice softball field. I play softball also.
We're not going to sacrifice, I, I think that you'll be, you'll be surprised once it's done.
Where's your shields? You good? Location. Good, Ronnie?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, we'll move on to the next.
You have to redo, you have to redesign the infield on that softball field.
Yes, yeah, but that's, you're just shaving the, I mean, all I do is pull the arch and, and then cut the grass off and redo the bases. That's...
So what you're getting here is just a consensus to go to the next?
Yes. And I needed a site to get people to come look at too, to start getting prices. All right. Thank you, guys.
All right, items G, H, and I have been removed. We get a motion to approve the consent agenda or any item that needs to be removed. We can discuss. We got a motion by Commissioner Young.
Second.
Say my Commissioner Bill, all in favor? We have two appointments for the, hang up for just a second. Never mind, let them go. We're good. We got two appointments for the planning board, Barry Breeden and Ben Lassiter.
I think you're both noble, kind of independent people in the community. And I think they both bring a good, you know, perspective to the board. So I think that's a motion.
I will take, make a motion to approve both. But I guess one at a time?
I think we can do them both.
Approve them both?
Yep, Barry Breeden and Ben Lassiter. Motion by Commissioner Young.
Second.
Say my Commissioner Shields, all in favor? Mr. Attorneys, your reason for a closed session?
I don't have any.
All right, Ms. Allison. Can you please step up here? Come around. Gosh, about everybody's left. I, I saved this for the end. No, it's a good thing. Come around here. Come in. I'm married to the most patient woman in the world. We've been married about 23 years and basically half of that I've been on this commission. So during my time on this board, we've raised kids, business. She's given me advice on how to run this county. And our life and our marriage is stronger than ever. So I couldn't... Ask for a motion to adjourn please.
Yes.
Rachel, will you send us that comeback moment?
I will.
Okay. I'm not crying, my eyes are sweating. They're sweating.
I'm telling no lies.
You have to open in DC. You have to be here in DC.
We got sworn in before that meeting.
Yep.
You ask for the German?
Yes.
You got a good motion in a second.
Second.
I can say, good to say, meeting adjourned.
Not yet.
Got a good motion?
I know.
Yeah, motion. My Commissioner Bill.
Yes, sir.
Say my Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.